All right, it looks like most people have settled in and have joined the webinar. So we're going to go ahead and get started. This is a webinar for the Kahalko Road Widening and Safety Enhancement Project. It's actually a public hearing and obviously it's virtual. It's going to be a webinar. And so we are very excited to make this presentation tonight and have you participate virtually. Hopefully everyone is keeping safe and you know, staying healthy through the holiday season. Let's go to the next slide. So tonight's meeting format is a webinar. It is being recorded. It will be posted online following the meeting. So you can watch it later if you'd like or share it with some friends. So we want to make sure you're aware of that. The presentation slides, we're going to present, we'll be covering a lot of different topics. And the website that it will be posted on when it's done is rcprojects.org/kahalko-road-widening. So that's where all the information will be posted. And throughout the webinar tonight, we will be posting some of those links in the chat feature. So you will be seeing some things in the chat feature which will be helpful to you, whether it's a link or something that will be useful to just give you directions. Tonight is also going to be presented simultaneously in Spanish translation. If you click on the globe at the bottom of your screen, there should be something that looks like that globe. If you click on that and you select the Spanish translation or Spanish, you should be able to hear tonight's meeting in Spanish. So we're going to have that mentioned right now in Spanish itself. So please make that announcement.
Traducción simultánea al español está disponible. Haga clic en el icono interpretación en el globo terreno de la pantalla y escoja español.
All right, in addition to having it in translation through the globe, you can also have the Spanish version of today's presentation and additional information which will be posted on the chat.
La presentación en español de hoy e información nacional se publicará en el chat.
And to use closed captioning in English, you can select the CC on your Zoom screen at the bottom as well. Next slide. So all of the webcams tonight will remain off during the entire presentation. Microphones will also remain off and will be turned on when your name or the last four phone digits are announced during the verbal comment session. And we'll explain a little bit more of those details in a second. The court reporter will transcribe verbal comments after the presentation. They are online, a court reporter, just like as if we were in person. And they will be transcribing all of the input that we received tonight. Written comments may be submitted by clicking the Q and A icon. The chat feature will not be accepting comments or questions. So I want to make sure you understand that. We're going to push information out through the chat feature, but we are not accepting your formal written comments through the chat feature. That is only going to be accepted through the Q and A icon. So we can keep those two channels clear for different purposes. So please use the Q and A icon if you'd like to make a comment and not make one verbally. You can type in your comment. They will not be read, but they will be part of the formal record and part of the formal document that is responded to. So just making sure that that's very clear. For any technical support, please call 909-313-0351. That's 909-313-0351. Next slide, please. So we have a very robust agenda tonight. We're going to be covering a lot of ground. If you would like to leave a comment through the Q and A feature at any time during the presentation, you can do that. You don't have to wait until the end. The only thing you'll have to wait until the end is if you'd like to make a verbal comment, but you can raise your hand at any point if you know you're going to make a comment. And we'll be able to see that and answer those raised hands at the very end of the presentation. But for tonight's agenda, we just mentioned some of the welcoming features that we went over. We're going to be talking about the purpose of the hearing. Why are we doing this? We'll talk about the speakers and the project team. We'll talk about the purpose and need of the project and the proposed alternatives that go along with meeting that purpose and need. The anticipated cost and right of way. We'll look at the environmental process. We'll talk about the draft environmental impact report, environmental impact statement and its contents. We'll talk about conservation areas. We'll talk about agency coordination and community engagement that we've been doing. And then where and how to submit comments as part of this process. Next slide. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to present the alternatives on being considered for the proposed Kahalko Road Widening and Safety Enhancement Project. You can see the map there which clearly describes our project study area and the different alternatives that are being considered. We also are here tonight to provide a forum for public comment on the proposed project and the results of the environmental analysis that has been conducted. So a lot of work has been going on behind the scenes and tonight we're here to present some of that to help you understand where we are in the process and then to get your feedback. Next slide. Some of the key project team members. We have obviously the Riverside County Transportation Department and California Department of Transportation, Caltrans. Those are the two lead agencies. We have a number of consultants as well. We have ICF who is the lead consultant for the environmental work that's been done. We also have Ariano Associates, which is leading tonight's webinar and the public communication. And then we have AECOM who is leading the design and engineering elements of the project. Next slide. So we have a number of panelists that are with us tonight that are going to be listening to your input into the presentation. Some of them will be speakers. We have John Ashlock, who's the county project manager. We also have Aaron Burton, who's the Caltrans project manager. You'll be hearing from Brian Calvert, who's the environmental consultant lead, who's going to be presenting some of the information. Also with ICF Katara Anderson, who's also going to be presenting some of those details related to the environmental process. My name is Chester Britt. I'm the outreach consultant, working on this project with some of our staff to help put the webinar on tonight and notify everyone. And then we also have Diana Orozco, who's our interpreter tonight. So if you are on the Spanish channel, you should be hearing the presentation in live interpretation from Diana. Slide. So with that, I'm going to introduce Brian Calvert.
Thanks Chester. So my name is Brian Calvert. I'm the consultant project manager for the county for this project. In terms of the project as it's been developed, there were three basic areas of need that were identified for the project based on scoping activities and other upfront work that was performed. And from that need came the three purpose items that you see here. One is to improve the transportation facility to address anticipated growth and mobility needs. The second is to improve interregional travel by improving east-west mobility in Riverside County. And the third is to improve roadway alignment and intersection design to enhance safety. Next slide. So for the project, there are three build alternatives that have been proposed. Those are alternative one, alternative two C, and alternative four, and also the no build alternative. And these four alternatives have been analyzed in the draft California Environmental Quality Act, National Environmental Policy Act combined document, which is an EIR, EIS, Environmental Impact Report, Environmental Impact Statement. Just to note, alternative one has been identified as the locally preferred alternative under SEQA by the county. However, the alternative, the preferred alternative will not be identified until the final environmental document, at which time any comments made on the project will be taken into consideration prior to identification of that preferred alternative. Next slide. So in terms of an overview of the projects, alternative one generally follows the existing Kahalko Road alignment. It extends from Temescal Canyon Road to Interstate 215, as all three build alternatives do. As I mentioned, it generally follows the Kahalko Road alignment. However, there have been modifications to address some of the horizontal and vertical curves to try and improve the safety of the roadway as it currently exists. Alternative two C is very similar to alternative one. However, you can see where that arrow is pointing at Kahalko Road. The Kahalko dips further to the south than under build alternative one. And that pulls the roadway away from Lake Matthews further to the south. Alternative four proceeds along Kahalko Road and then along El Sabrante Road to the north of Lake Matthews. So it would go to the north side of the lake rather than to the south side. And then the no build alternative would not include any improvements out in the project area associated with the project. So everything would remain as it currently exists. Next slide. So this typical cross section shows the general roadway alignment at the western end of the project under all, under build alternative one and two C, and then also under build alternative four along Kahalko and then north along La Sierra Avenue. As you could see in the cross section, there'd be two travel lanes in each direction, eastbound and westbound. And through this portion of the project, there would be a wide median, unpaved median included. The purpose of that is to accommodate to future travel lanes if those are ever determined to be needed in the future. And the purpose of reserving this space in the median now is to address all biological impacts, potential impacts associated with that median work in the environmental document that's been prepared. And also so that in the future, if additional lanes are needed, then that, then having that area reserved in the median would reduce the potential for impacts to occur. Next slide. This shows the eastern end of the project to the east of the lake. So this portion is the same under all three build alternatives through this section. There would be two lanes each direction, eastbound and westbound with a 14-foot median as shown here. So there is not being area reserved in the median for this portion of the project alignment. Next slide. This cross section shows the proposed alignment along El Sabrante Road. In this case, there would also be two lanes in each direction along El Sabrante Road, both in the eastbound and westbound direction. There would be an unpaved median, would not be wide enough to accommodate two future lanes. However, that decision was made because there are not as many resources along the north side of the lake in terms of biological resources to, with the need to preserve that median for future improvement. Under this build alternative, it should be noted that Kahalko Road to the south of Lake Matthews would be maintained in its current condition. So there would be no improvements to Kahalko Road under build alternative four south of Lake Matthews. However, the roadway would remain in service. Next slide. So these next several slides that we're showing here are presenting a little bit more detail on what the alignment looks like close up or closer up anyway. What you see here on the screen is that within the blue, that is the proposed edge of pavement or new pavement associated with the project. The white is the limit of disturbance. So that's the limits of both temporary and permanent disturbance that would be associated with construction and operation of the facility. And also shown on here are the location of any signalized intersections, whether those are existing signalized or would be newly signalized as part of the project. The, at the east end of this map, you can see there's an area that dips down that is outlined in white. However, there's no blue in the middle of that area. And you'll see several areas like this. And that area that dips down to the south is where the existing Kahalko Road is located. And Kahalko Road would be removed in that portion as Kahalko would be moved to the north and straightened as shown here to eliminate that curve in the roadway. So you'll see several areas where there is a sliver of white that's shown, but there's no blue on the inside. And that's generally where portions of Kahalko would be removed as the existing roadway is realigned. Next slide. So as we move to the east, this shows the portion of Kahalko Road under build alternative one, south of Lake Matthews. As you can see on the right-hand part of the screen, the eastern part of the screen to the west of Lake Matthews Drive, Kahalko Road currently dips, has a fairly substantial dip to the south. And as you can see in this, on this map, the roadway would be shifted to the north to remove this substantial dip to the south. You'll notice there is a blue line within that dip that remains. And that is a portion of the existing roadway that would remain so that access would be maintained with the houses that are located in that area along Dirt Road and Richie Drive. However, the western portion of Kahalko Road through there, within the white portion where there is not a blue line, that would be, that portion of existing Kahalko Road would be removed under this build alternative. Next slide. So as I mentioned on the overview slide, alternative two C is very similar to alternative one as shown here. However, the area of white with no blue in the middle that snakes through just south of Lake Matthews, which is existing Kahalko Road, that portion of Kahalko Road would be shifted south away from Lake Matthews as shown in this, on this map. That portion of Kahalko Road would not be open to traffic following completion of construction. A dirt road is intended to be left in that alignment to allow access that MWD needs for their maintenance. However, there would be no public access to that roadway. Next slide. So this continues, alternative one and two C, they are very similar through this segment. As you can see, the main move would remain on existing Kahalko Road. And there would continue to be a signalized intersection for accessing El Sabrante Road from Kahalko Road. Next slide. So this shows alternative four, build alternative four. As you can see from this slide, the, the project would continue along existing Kahalko Road until it got to the west side of Lake Matthews. At that point, it would turn and go north generally following the existing La Sierra Avenue alignment. And then once it got to El Sabrante in the north portion of this map, it would turn east and continue along existing El Sabrante Road. As I mentioned, under this alternative, existing Kahalko Road that's shown there south of the lake in this map would not be improved. It would just be maintained in its current condition. Next slide. So this slide shows the configuration for alternative four, particularly where it comes back and rejoins with existing Kahalko Road. So the movement of traffic under this alternative would be along El Sabrante and would transition back to Kahalko Road. And if traffic wanted to get down to existing Kahalko Road south of the lake, a signalized intersection would have to be used to turn and then to go south to get onto existing Kahalko Road. Next slide. So as I mentioned previously, alternatives one, two C and four all have the same alignment and design proposed to the east of Lake Matthews. And that is shown here. There is one portion right in the middle where you'll see there's no blue shown. That's because Kahalko Road has already been widened to four lanes there, which was conditioned as part of the development that's shown. So there are not additional improvements that are needed through that short segment. Next slide. Again, this is the remainder of the project to the east of the lake going to the 215. This shows you the alignment through this area and the signalized intersections that would be implemented. One thing to note, to the east of Lake Matthews, there will be a raised median as part of Kahalko Road. So turning movements would be limited to those locations where there are signalized intersections. Next slide. So this slide shows the anticipated project cost and the right-of-way acquisition that's anticipated for each of the projects. As shown here, the cost range from a low with alternative one from approximately $358 million to a high with alternative four of $514 million, with alternative C falling in the middle at around $400 million. Also shown here, you can see the number of full acquisitions that would, that are anticipated to be necessary for each of the build alternatives. Those full acquisitions means the acquisition of a full parcel, a parcel in its entirety for construction of the project. So those estimates range from 62 full parcels under alternative one and alternative two C up to 76 full parcels under alternative four. Overall, the bottom line here shows the anticipated acreage that's anticipated for acquisition under the project. So this includes both full acquisitions that are addressed in that center line and also partial acquisitions that would be needed. And those range from 218 acres as shown here under alternative one on the low end up to 240 acres, which is consistent with alternative four. And alternative C is for all intents and purposes, the same as alternative four. Next slide. So this shows the environmental process that's been followed for the project and will continue to be followed. So this started with the project study initiation and scoping early on in the project when scoping meetings were held. This moved on to the preparation of the technical studies and analyses for the project. And then those technical studies fed into the draft environmental document that's currently out for public review and comment, which is why we're here tonight. This is the public hearing for this project, for the environmental document to obtain comments that folks may have regarding the document. There's, will be a time, there's a little over a month after the, this public hearing for folks to continue to provide comments on the environmental document. After the public hearing, the, all comments will be collected that are received. Any comments received on the environmental document itself will be reviewed and addressed in the final environmental document. And as part of that review and consideration of comments, the preferred alternative will be identified for the project. At that point, the environmental document, the final environmental document will be adopted by Caltrans and the county. And then it'll move on, assuming that one of the build alternatives is selected as the prefer, or identified as the preferred alternative. Then the project will move into the permitting phase and also property acquisition and final design phase. And then on into construction. Next slide. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Katara Anderson, who is the environmental lead for the project on the consultant team.
Thank you, Brian. So as you mentioned, a number of technical studies have been prepared for the project. And these address specific resources and topics, including biological resources, cultural resources, air quality and noise. The studies include analysis of potential impacts under each alternative specific to the resource or topic studied. As part of the agency coordination for this project, participating and cooperating agencies have had opportunity to review the studies and provide their input as well. This input was considered, and in some cases, project refinements made and technical studies updated. And these final results are included in the draft environmental document. Next slide, please. The draft EIR, EIS is a large document. So this slide provides an outline of the contents and locations within the document where certain information may be found. A summary of the resources and topics analyzed for the project and potential impacts under each alternative is available in the main summary section at the beginning of the document. Chapter one provides information about background and need for the project. And chapter two provides design details for each alternative. Chapters three and four include analysis of the alternatives. And additional information may be found as indicated in the remaining chapters listed. Appendices A through K provide supplemental information related to content within the chapters of the document. Next slide, please. As indicated on this slide, the proposed project occurs within the boundaries of multiple habitat conservation plan areas. These include the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, Stevens Kangaroo Rats Habitat Conservation Plan, and Lake Matthews Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan and Natural Community Conservation Plan. Project consistency with each plan was evaluated and included coordination with resource agencies and area managers, analysis of biological impacts for each build alternative and project refinements in response to agents, agency input. Next slide, please. The Western Riverside County MSHCP encompasses approximately 1.26 million acres and is designated for the protection of 146 native species of plants, birds and animals, and the preservation of half a million acres of their habitats. This plan also includes designated conservation lands and criteria areas as shown in this slide. These have specific protection and other requirements in terms of their potential use and plan compatibility. Next slide, please. The Lake Matthews Estelle Mountain Core Reserve is one of seven core reserves of the Stevens Kangaroo Rat HCP reserve system within Riverside County. It encompasses approximately 11,243 acres. This core reserve was established as part of the SKR HCP and is now managed under the Western Riverside MSHCP conservation areas, consistent with both the SKR, HCP and other management agreements for the reserve. Next slide, please. The Lake Matthews Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan and Natural Community Conservation Plan encompasses 5,993.5 acres around Lake Matthews. 5,110.4 acres of this is dedicated to the Lake Matthews Multiple Species Reserve that is managed for various species of plants and animals indigenous to Western Riverside County. Next slide, please. This map shows the anticipated number of wildlife crossings and their proposed placement under each of the three build alternatives. The sizes of the crossings vary from small to extra-large for bridge areas. Their placement and design are based primarily on guidance and specifications included in the Western Riverside MSACP and also took into consideration site conditions, species requirements and design specifications, as well as recommendations obtained through consultations with resource agencies, wildlife experts, and the reviews and reviews of current literature regarding wildlife crossing design and function. Although not required, all proposed small and medium wildlife crossings would be designed with the widths that are twice the crossing height for increased openness and better facilitation of animal movement. It is important to note that the crossings shown for each alternative are specific to that alternative. And depending on the alternative identified for the project, the crossings shown for other alternatives would not be implemented. Next slide, please. Since the initiation of environmental studies in late 2010, the county, Caltrans and consultants have met with a number of resource agencies, land management districts and authorities, Native American tribes and environmental advocacy groups. This input and coordination have contributed to the development of the project purpose and need, technical study methodologies, project design and refinements to the project alternatives. Next slide, please. In addition to agency coordination, community engagement has also been very important, especially considering the size of the project and the number of communities in which the project is located. As indicated on this slide, a number of public meetings have been held, beginning with scoping meetings in 2011, followed by presentations for local community organizations, municipal advisory councils and local town halls since. Input received during these meetings was considered in the development and analysis of the project alternatives. For more information on community engagement and other project coordination, please refer to chapter five and appendix H of the draft environmental document currently available for review and comment. Next slide, please. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chester Britt. Thank you.
Thank you, Katara. Thank you, Katara. So we're at the end of the presentation now, where we're going to be taking a formal public comment. As we mentioned, this is a public hearing, and we provided a lot of information about the environmental process and document. And now we're going to be taking your input. So how can you provide input? There are a number of ways to do that. And you'll have opportunities to submit public comments on specifically the draft environmental impact report and impact statement. If you would like to provide verbal testimony tonight, we do have a court reporter that is participating as part of tonight's meeting. And we'll be giving you instructions on how to provide verbal testimony on the next slide. If you are not wanting to make verbal comments, but you would like to mail your comment in, maybe you'd like to think about it, write a letter. You can write that, attention to Kahalko draft EIR slash EIS comment period. Riverside County Transportation Department at 3525 14th Street, Riverside, California 92501. You can also email comments to the project website, or email address, I should say, at kahalkoroad-rctd@rivco.org. Again, you can email your comments to that website and, or that email address. And we will be posting that on the chat feature as well. So that if you didn't have a chance to write it down, you can have that as a resource. You can also fax comments to 951-955-3164. Again, 951-955-3164, if you'd like to fax comments. An important note is that all the comments are due no later than March 3rd, 2022. So you must provide your comments to us on that date. Things must be postmarked, if you're mailing them or email on that March 3rd date or before. So wanted to make a special note of that. Next slide. To process comments, written comments, you know, provide a comment tonight using the Q and A feature. I mentioned that earlier. Please do not use the chat feature for your formal comment. Use the Q and A feature, and it's at the bottom of your Zoom screen. You should see something that says Q and A with dialogue boxes like we've posted on this bullet. And once you click on that, you should be able to just type your comment in, and we'll have that as part of the formal record. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you will be asked to raise your hand, which again is another feature on Zoom. If you look at the bottom, there's a raise your hand feature. You just simply click on that, and we can see who has raised their hands. We'll be calling you and your name. And when we make that announcement for you, we will unmute your microphone so that you can speak. And then you'll need to also unmute yourself so that we can hear you. So we'll go one at a time, and I'll call out two or three names at a time to get people in the queue and make sure that people know that their turn is coming up. For people that were calling in and not using the Zoom feature, you'll need to use star nine to raise your hand, and we'll be able to see that. And then we'll call on you, just like we're calling on the people on Zoom. You'll have two minutes per speaker to make your comment. This is not a Q and A session. It is a formal comment, comment period as part of the public hearing. So we'll have a timer, and you'll be able to see the timer go down as you speak. We would ask that you be very respectful of the timer. We are expecting a number of people to want to make comments tonight. So if that's the case, we want to give everyone ample time to do that. Again, when it is your turn, if you're a Zoom app user tonight, you'll be asked and called on, on the order that we received your hand raised. We'll unmute your microphone. When it's your turn to speak, please give your name so that the court reporter can put that into the record. And that way, we have a formal record of your comment. If you are a call-in user, when it's your turn, you'll need to press star six to unmute your mic. And we should be able to make that announcement. So with that, I believe the next slide, we just want to thank you again for being here tonight. We want to reiterate that this is being recorded. So if you want a copy of this presentation, it's going to be part of this recording. You can go to rcprojects.org/kahalko-road-widening. And that has the environmental document in it. It also will have a formal recording of tonight's meeting as well. So I think that is pretty much our entire presentation now. If we go to the next slide, we'll have some of the same directions that I just gave as a kind of a reminder. There's our two-minute timer. I can see that some people have already raised their hand. So I'm going to call the first three names, just so you know who you are. And then if you do want to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand now, and it'll just be put into the queue. So the first three names that I have are Tom Pollock, Von Jones, and Jerry Sinich. So those are the first three. I'm, again, I'm going to call your name as it's your turn. We'll unmute your microphone. If you could do the same, state your name, and then you'll have two minutes to make your comment. So Tom is our first person who's raised their hand. So Tom, we're going to go ahead and unmute your microphone now. If you could do the same on your end, make sure we can hear you, and then state your name to the court reporter and make your comment. You need to unmute yourself, Tom. Or, well. There you go.
This is Susan Nash. Our computers got crossed.
Oh, no problem.
I have three comments to make. One, you have three alternatives, but no project. I've reviewed, in particular, the biological section and the MSHCP for Lake Matthews section. And the way it's organized is completely incomprehensible. You must identify a project and then do an analysis of the alternatives in relationship to that project, not mix it up like that. The Lake Matthews take permit must first be amended before this project can be approved. You can approve the project and then ask the department and the service to go along and say the take permit is okay. MSAT compliance is not SEQA compliance. Guidelines 15065 must, means that you have to analyze and identify the impacts and then apply the mitigation. Some of the mitigation may be out of the MSHCP, or it may not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next person who has raised their hand is Von Jones. Von, we're going to go ahead and unmute your microphone. If you could do the same, and please state your name for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
My name is Von Jones. I live on Lounsbury Road, and I've been living in Lake Matthews area for about 22 years now. And I'm aware of the unsafe environment that Kahalko Road presents. So I'm very excited about this project. I am concerned, however, about Lounsbury, because about 25 residents use that street, which is considered a private road, not a county road, to access both in and out and in times of danger. And I don't see that opened up still to the Kahalko Road. That's a big concern. I noticed that some people are considering us going to Kirkpatrick, but those roads that connect to Kirkpatrick from Lounsbury aren't very accessible. So that's a big concern for me and for my neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, our next speaker is going to be Jerry Sinich. And I apologize if I get the names wrong. And then the two following speakers after that will be Gonzalo Garcia and Sandy Roy. So Jerry, if you would unmute your microphone and state your name for the record, and maybe pronounce your last name so we know how to pronounce it correctly.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jerry, and the last name is Sinic.
Sinic, okay.
And I also am excited about this project. It represents a significant path forward. I have more of a question. Along the roadway, will there be bike paths associated with the road? And also, will there be separate lanes for bus transit? The Riverside Transit Agency. That was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Gonzalo Garcia. Gonzalo, if you could unmute your microphone and state your name, you'll have two minutes.
Chester, just putting in here, Gonzalo. A version of Zoom, so he will need to. Or providing a comment.
Okay, Monica, you were cutting, you were cutting out, so I didn't hear exactly what you told me, other than he had an old version of Zoom, it sounds like.
Just in order for him to provide his comment, so I'll be doing that shortly.
All right, so we'll move to the next person. All right, Sandy Roy. Sandy, if you could unmute your microphone and state your name for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Yes, good evening. My name is Sandy Roy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm calling in opposition to alternative four. I'm a resident of Victoria Grove, and I've been a resident here for 20 years. And I know that most of the people whose homes you want to acquire for alternative four have lived here for about 20 years. And some are some very dear friends. And I know that this would be much more impactful to those families. I understand there's many considerations, but I don't think that rerouting Kahalko traffic onto El Sabrante and then down La Sierra, which is already congested, this would create additional traffic passing by three area schools that are already congested at drop-off and pickup times. And so rerouting this traffic down that alternative is just unacceptable. It's cost prohibitive. It was the most expensive alternative you presented. It was the most impactful to a larger number of residents. So yes, it might have had the least environmental impact, but it would have the most impact on to your constituents that, you know, will be voting for the people that would be approving these projects. So I hope that they consider that, because we will remember something like this come, come election time. We definitely don't want our community impacted. We don't want this extra traffic. And again, I think that the people that make these decisions should be driving these roads during those high-volume times, and they would see how much congestion is there. And one of the things that we fear as a community here of 1,100 homes in Victoria Grove is the fact that a lot of people will try to bypass El Sabrante, because it will be so congested, and use Blackburn Road that goes right through the middle of our community and right in front of a park and right in front of a school as an alternative. And that's just not acceptable to us. That's not what we signed up for when we bought our homes here 20 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next three speakers are going to be Harold Gotts. The next one is a phone number that is ending in 0102. And then there is Richard Simpson. So Harold, you're up next. If you could unmute your microphone after we do the same and state your name for the record, that you'll have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Harold Gotts, and I live on the west end of Kahalko. All of these other modifications, when you come down Kahalko, it goes right by my house. So I've lived here for 35 years, and so I've, I've enjoyed quite a lot, quite a good run, as my wife would say, of being here. And I'm impacted by the traffic that comes down. But it looks like, from the maps that I see, you're going to take part of my property, which is where my water well is. And also, if it's, if you're that wide right there, it's kind of difficult to turn into my house as it is. I'm at 9076, and the, I'm, I'm, I'm worried about the access both east and west to my property. And being that we don't have city water out here, everybody has to have a well. And so if we're going to have, we have no fire protection either. So if we have, if we have opportunity to put a fire hydrant out this way, would be a good thing. And about noise control, right now, in the morning, when I try to leave around eight o'clock, I literally have to wait for someone to break the traffic for me so I can get out of my driveway. So I'm concerned about all of those things, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, our next speaker is, got a phone number that ends in 0102. If you could unmute your microphone, we'll do the same, and we should be able to hear you if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Mary Rasneffos, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Center for Biological Diversity. The center is concerned about the far-reaching impacts expanding Kahalko Road will have on habitat, particularly on the Western Riverside MSHCP, Stevens Kangaroo Rat HCP, and Lake Matthews MSHCP and Core Reserve. The project's location near and on so many protected habitats for special status species is unprecedented, and the county must ensure all possible steps are taken to first avoid and then minimize, and if necessary, mitigate any remaining harms this project will cause to these areas. To avoid and minimize the project's harms, the county should adopt alternative four, which is the only road expansion option that goes north of Lake Matthews, reducing impacts on the many protected areas south of lake. If current mitigation lands are impacted, the county must increase mitigation ratios to reflect the protected nature of the habitat impacted by road expansion. The persistence of many special status species in Riverside County depends on consistent protection from the county and compliance with the existing HCPs. We'll submit extensive written comments further detailing our concerns and suggestions for improvement to the project should it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have three more speakers that have raised their hand. Richard Simpson, Rosa Espinosa, and Connie Amerty. If anyone else would like to speak tonight, you will just need to raise your hand, and then you'll be following them. So our first of the remaining speakers is Richard Simpson. So Richard, if we're going to unmute your mic, if you could do the same, and then just state your name.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rich Simpson. Thank you for the presentation tonight. And I share some concerns, but am excited that we're doing something about the traffic. I am also a resident of Victoria Grove. And Sandy Roy stated, stated it very clearly, the concerns of all the residents here, the 1,100 homes that are here, specifically those especially of us that live in the south portion of Victoria Grove and make regular turns on El Sabrante. There are two roads, entrance, exit gates into our community off of El Sabrante that would more than likely become impossible to safely make a left-hand turn and even a right-hand turn out of, onto El Sabrante with the increased traffic. And I think overall, one of the things that needs to be considered here, and I was hoping to have a little bit more information shared tonight about that, is driving behavior. And I think what we're going to find here, and I see this every day as I look out my back window, drivers treating this, this roadway, new roadway, whether it's alternative four or even, even the other alternatives along Kahalko, as a freeway, when it really shouldn't be treated as a freeway. I see that there are traffic signals, and I understand that. But we get a lot of traffic even now along El Sabrante, where there are traffic signal, or there are stop signs at least right now, that's, that's going very fast, well beyond 55 miles per hour. So I really want, I think there needs to be an alternative that, that creates a whole freeway, because I think that's ultimately what we need here. I think this project, although good and has lots of good intentions, is a compromise, and we really need that east-west freeway between the 215 and the 15. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Rosa Espinosa. Rosa, we're going to unmute your mic, if you could do the same, and then state your name. We're not able to hear you, Rosa, so. You could unmute yourself. No? All right, we'll come back to Rosa. Let's go to Connie Amerty. Connie, if you could unmute yourself. Go ahead and speak.
Yes, I'm Connie Amerty. I'm also a resident of Victoria Grove. I'm speaking in opposition again for alternative number four, as I believe the most acquisition occurs in our area. I think that people are way more important than rodents. And also, there was just a new builder approved for building homes on the corner of McAllister and El Sabrante. And also, there was just a new builder approved for building homes on the corner of McAllister and El Sabrante. So they're going to be building brand new homes that back up to El Sabrante right there, and that should be considered as well. Most importantly is the fact that traffic will already cuts through Blackburn Road to McAllister to save the stop sign at El Sabrante and La Sierra. And when El Sabrante is double or triple the amount of cars, they're going to continue to do that right past the school, a little hometown store, and a park. We don't want our children in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to try Rosa again. If for some reason we're not able to connect with her, just want to remind you that you can provide your comment on the Q and A feature by just typing it in, and it will be part of the formal record. But Rosa, let's give you another chance here and see if we can hear you. Go ahead and start speaking. No? We apologize. I'm not sure what the problem is, but we're not able to hear you. So we're going to now move to what's listed as the Corona Sportsman Club Black. Again, if you could unmute your microphone, we'll do the same and state your name for the record, and then we'll take your comment. Monica, they're showing up as muted. There you go.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, my name's Adal Salem. I don't know why it showed up as Corona Sportsman Club. That's in error. I am a member of that club, but it shouldn't be for this forum. I'm a resident on Harley John, the southernmost portion of it, where it conjoins with Kahalko. I'm calling and vehemently opposed to Alternative Four. I heard the speaker from the diversity group state that that would be least impactful to the wildlife in the area. I totally disagree. The road should, road that would connect Kahalko, or excuse me, to Sabrante, El Sabrante Road to Harley John goes right straight through a habitat wildlife preserve. It's directly behind my property. It would create all kinds of noise out here. It would be very disruptive to the neighborhood. I conjoin with the people of Victoria Grove and their concerns. Also, in addition to that, if you go down Sabrante, El Sabrante, it may have seismic impact on the, the Lake Matthews Dam, and I'm sure that's been studied, but that is a grave concern. Like I say, of all the alternatives, Alternative Four is the most impactful to the residents of this area, and we're vehemently opposed to it. I can conjoin with Raglum and Glamarda in stating that as well. They're both a writing group in this area, which I've been an officer of and president of REG. These are concerns that have been voiced before, and I hope they're considered. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have Von Jones and Maxine Henry as my next two hands that are raised. Von Jones?
Yes, hello. Again, I appreciate the comment regarding the protected of the environment and species, but I am even more concerned about the protection of human life. I note that there is at least 40 accidents on Kahalko, at least a year, and that's more than one a month, more than one, more than three a month. And some of those are fatalities. I myself was involved in a head-on collision, which caused the other driver to die in front of me and my daughter. And I've been told for the past 20 years that they would be in, in making Kahalko wider to help save lives, or do something at least. And this is, I think, the first step to showing some concern about human life over environmental lives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Maxine Henry. Monica, if we could unmute Maxine, and then you need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Yes, hi, I'm Maxine Henry, and I am a resident in the Lake Matthews area. Actually, live down the street from Von Jones. I too am concerned about the habitat, but also more concerned about human lives and the disgusting amount of traffic that has come to be in the Lake Matthews area. Also, one of the concerns I have in any proposed alternative route or expansion of Kahalko is a lot of the streets leading up to Kahalko are not paved. They are very dangerous, and they need to be considered if you're going to consider any of the options, regardless to what it is. We live on a street right now that has a very dangerous turnout, whether you're making a turn onto Kahalko or turning off of Kahalko onto Lounsbury. So those things need to be looked at and considered as part of whatever proposed widening you have. And I can totally agree with the amount of traffic that goes up and down El Sabrante. In the 22 years I've lived here, I see people driving up and down not only Kahalko, but El Sabrante at speeds that should be conducive to being on a freeway. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Rosa, we're going to try you again. Rosa Espinosa, let's see if we can unmute your microphone, and you can do the same, and we can hear you hopefully. There you go. It looks like you're set to go. Go ahead, Rosa. Showing that you're connected, so I don't, where, I'm not hearing you, so I don't know if anyone else is hearing Rosa, but. I'm not. So I apologize. I'm not sure what the issue is, but again, if you'd like to type your comment into the Q and A feature, we can get your comment in that way, or send us an email or a letter. That would be welcome as well. We have a couple more people. Maxine Henry. Let's see, Maxine.
Actually just spoke.
So you just need to un, unraise your hand then.
Okay.
Yeah, no worries. And then go ahead, George Hague, it looks like. George, go ahead. Unmute your microphone.
There you go.
There you go.
Couple of comments raised by others. Are, are the signals, just out of curiosity, going to be synchronized? Are we just going to stop along the way? Is there, are you putting in any type of solid median? There should not be a solid median in order to allow every once in a while the wildlife to cross besides what's underneath. You should have complete streets. This road should be a complete street. You can go to state websites and analyze what a complete street would include, and that would also include things like bike lanes, which should be part of this project, multiple ways of getting around. Equestrian crossing should be definitely more realized as part of this project than it currently is. What happens to SKR and the SKR reserve when the time is out after 30 years, which is like probably around 2030? What's going to happen, and what are you doing to preserve the SKR? More light is needing on these animal crossings or under crossings, and I want to know in the documents how and when these crossings are going to be maintained and cleaned out in order to make sure that underbrush doesn't fill them up. How are you going to compensate people who live close to the project and the noise and so forth that is going to happen as a result of this, the pollution? People need to realize this is really a goods movement project. This road is going to be filled with diesel trucks as a result of this project, making it even more hazardous probably than it currently is. Please repeat again how we get access to this presentation, repeated a couple of times, so we can write it down. An environmental life is very important, especially since it may cause it to disappear from this planet. We do not want that. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, this is going to be posted on rcprojects.org forward slash Kahalko hyphen road hyphen widening. The meeting, as well as the comments and the presentation, all in a video. So that is all the people that have raised their hand. It's still not too late. We said that we were going to be here till 7:30, so we're going to stay online if people want to raise their hand. Again, you don't have to make a verbal comment. You can do it in a variety of ways. We would encourage you to use the Q and A feature here, to send an email, to send a letter. There's a variety of ways to make a comment, but we did get through quite a few tonight of people that raised their hand. Court reporter has taken all of that and is going to transcribe all that information so that we have it as part of the formal record. Rosa, it looks like you're going to give it another shot, or maybe not. Raise your hand, and then, yeah, go ahead, Rosa. Let's try you again. Monica, if we could unmute Rosa. You could do the same on your end. Maybe change your microphone setting. We still can't hear you. It looks like you're muted on your end. That's what it appears on our screen. So again, Rosa, we apologize for that because we want to get all of your comments. So that's pretty much it, unless anyone else wants to raise their hand. Again, we're going to stay on the, the call until 7:30. But we again, want to thank everyone for taking time out of your busy schedule right after the holidays to be part of this meeting. Hopefully, you learned a lot of information about the project. You've given us some good comments that are going to be part of the formal record, and those will be responded to as part of the final environmental document. Brian, I see your hand raised. I don't know if that's intentional, but if it is, you could go ahead and speak as well, otherwise.
I never, I never raised my hand, so I don't know what's going on.
All right, someone else has raised their hand. So Michael Aquino.
Michael? Yes, hello. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I'm ready. My, my name's Michael Aquino, and I'm a resident of Victoria Grove community whose home will be directly impacted by Alternative Four, which I'm against. As stated clearly by Sandy Roy and other Victoria group and Lake Hills homeowners, this, the, their version of the traffic will further burden Lassier Avenue in terms of traffic, potential increase in crime, noise and air pollution to existing and new communities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Debbie Walsh has raised her hand. Debbie?
Yes, yes. My name is Debbie Walsh, and I am actually opposed to the whole entire project, really much. As you remember, I have actually been out here for about 35 years in the area. And when the old 395 highway was four lanes, and then it had the median in between. We had the traffic. Everybody said, okay, we just keep adding lanes if we put in the 215 freeway. And as soon as you add lanes, it seems like there's more, actually more traffic than there was before. So if you look at this project, as George Hague was saying, it's nothing more, it will actually create nothing more than a truck route, route for, for our entire area. So the traffic is actually going to be a lot more if we add six lane, basically six lane freeway across our area. So there's other areas that may be more suitable, such as to the south. But if you add more, more lanes, you go across, and it goes to the 15 freeway, and then it goes to the 91. You're adding tens of thousands of more trucks with all these new warehouses that are just about to open at any time in the Me Valley area, and then, of course, in Reno Valley area, they are going to be using the Kahalko Road. And I just feel like it's, it's basically not going to be beneficial for the communities. If it was just left as a four lane road, it would probably be a good idea. Another issue is we have the regional trail maps, and I don't see the trails, the regional trails, mini trails, or the bike trails. Bike trail goes along Kahalko, then it goes to El Sabrante, and it goes back down La Sierra. So those are in the general plan, and that should be included. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm showing no one else has raised their hand. So again, we're going to be staying here till 7:30. If people want to leave the meeting, you're free to do that. Again, everything's going to be recorded and posted for your viewing, if you would like, or to share it with your friends at rcprojects.org forward slash Kahalko hyphen road hyphen widening. You can also see the full environmental document, as was mentioned earlier, which has a lot of technical sections to it, and a lot of detailed information in there. So that's where you can view that document is on that website. All right, we have another person who's raised their hand, Nancy Higbee. Nancy, we're going to unmute your microphone, if you could do the same, and state your name for the record. You need to unmute yourself, Nancy. We cannot hear you. It should be on the bottom left. You can select me. There you go.
Several, several trials. Am I unmuted now?
You are. We can hear you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Nancy Higbee. I've lived in Lake Matthews on On and All for about 35 years. The trouble with presentations like this Zoom presentation is that it, it covers so little of what this project really is. And I would like the presenters to be upfront about the fact that this is a road that is being built to accommodate the warehouses. This is a road that's being built for diesel trucks. And of course, we, we're not all together. We can't be standing there looking at the maps and discussing it with presenters like ordinarily would happen, and that's not your fault, I know. But I would like people, wherever you are, whether you're on the north of the lake or the south of the lake, to understand what this is going to do to all of our communities. If this is built to the specifications, there is no law in California that will prevent heavy use by large diesel trucks by commerce. It won't be for commuters. It will be for commerce. Commuters can use it at their own risk, just like they do now. The second thing is all the problems with light and noise and air pollution that are going to impact all of us because of the increase in traffic. And the other thing that's going to impact all of us is that there are no bike lanes, no bus lanes, no other forms of transportation, nor are there any equestrian accommodations. I would like some more studies done and some more time spent on this to address these things. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to raise their hand? All right, we'll just be patient here. It's 7:11. Again, we'll be here till 7:30. People can stay on and continue to wait with us. Harold Gotts. Harold, you've raised your hand.
Yeah, I spoke, this is Harold Gotts. I spoke a few minutes ago, but what I was concerned about is where I can look on this EIR, how it specifically impacts my property. That's what I mean. Thanks.
Katara, I don't know if we want to go back to that slide, which showed the different sections of the environmental document. which showed the different sections of the environmental document.
Yes, that would be good if the moderator could go back up to the, there you go. So it's, it is a large document, and to find specific information about an area, I would recommend going to chapter two, which has detailed project maps for each of the alternatives. And that way you can locate your, your area of interest. And then from that, you can go through chapter three, which lists, lists out the specific categories of resources and topics that are covered, and go to those that are of interest. And in there, it will have a breakdown of, of impacts, existing conditions, analyses. And unfortunately, it's going to be different for different resources and topics. It's just the way that, that the analyses are set up under CEQA NEPA. So for example, for community impacts, which is, I think, what you may be interested in, it does list out different communities such as Mead Valley, Temescal, Temescal area, and then the other communities throughout the project area. So there, it may be easier actually to find your area of interest once you confirm which of these communities that you fall within. And then as you go through the, the table of contents for this document, should also identify which sections in these chapters. I guess, discuss the specific resources as well as break them out by areas of the project where appropriate. But again, you may have to go to the specific section of interest, and from there, identify under existing conditions or the potential impacts. What area is, is, you know, that you're looking for? It's, it's, unfortunately, that's just the way that this is arranged, that the environmental document is arranged. But when it comes to community impacts, it is a little bit easier to find your area of interest because it is divided by, is broken down, I should say, within the subsections by specific community areas. I hope this helps.
All right, thank you. Sandy Roy has raised her hand, I believe. If you could unmute Sandy and then could take your comment.
Yes, thank you. I did join a little bit late, and so I do have two follow-up questions. When will the final decision be made on which alternative or not to do this project? When will that decision be made? And then my next question to that is who will be making that decision? So that we can also reach out to them directly or attend whatever meeting it will be made at? If you could just answer those two questions for me, I'd appreciate it.
Again, Katara, I don't know if you have anything to say about that. We're really not taking Q and A. We're mostly taking formal comment, but.
Right, so I think we asked our procedural. And, and this tonight, this is the, the public hearing to obtain comments, as Chester Britt indicated. It's really set up as a, a, as a question and answer type format. This is more of obtaining your comments and providing information about the, the project. So in terms of the process that is outlined in the environmental document, and, and as far as next step goes, next steps go, it may be good to show that slide that walks through the process with the arrows really quick.
Yeah, let me, let me jump in really quick, Katara. So the identification of the preferred alternative will be made in the final environmental document. And the final environmental document is adopted by Caltrans as the NEPA lead agency and the county as the CEQA lead agency. So I think that those were the two items that you were questioning or wanting information regarding, correct? All right, thank you, Brian. Anyone else? Just another time check. It is 7:18. We'll be staying on until 7:30. If you are just joining, the presentation has been recorded along with the comments, and you can view that at rcprojects.org/cahalco-road-widening. That's also been posted in the chat so that you have access to that link. That's also where you can view the environmental document that you heard Katara speaking about, and the different sections of that, and the technical studies are all online where you can review all of that information. Again, as another reminder, you will need to make sure your comments are received by us by March 3, 2022, obviously. That will be the last day of the public comment period. We will not be taking comments after that date. So make sure anything is recorded and submitted before March 3. Give you plenty of time to review the document and provide input. Chester, just confirming, there's no other hands raised? Nope, just waiting patiently now. For those of you who are jumping off, again, thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to be with us tonight. And we do apologize that we have to be online and virtual, but public safety kind of warrants that, obviously. So we're doing our best to provide all the information and the resources available for you to have access to the project and the meeting and provide input. So hopefully, we've been able to do that tonight. Connie, it looks like you've raised your hand. Connie Amerty. I believe you spoke once before, but if you'd like to make another comment, we'll unmute your microphone and you can speak.
Yes, I would like to. Thank you. Again, I'm Connie Amerty, Victoria Grove. I'm also on the homeowners board of directors and homeowners association. We stand at 76 homes to lose over $15 million annually in assessments for these 76 homes. So it, it would be a big hit to our HOA on top of the fact that we have two areas of native plants and animals in our community that our HOA maintains, and we don't even own them, but we're required to maintain them. And now you're considering taking out 76 of our homes and deleting that much of our income. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Roy? Sandy, have you raised your hand?
Yes, I figure since no one's talking, I might as well add additional comments. I feel that even though you presented this, you have not really done the outreach to the schools and to the districts. It would impact two school districts. If you choose Alternative Four, it would impact our USD at Lake Matthews Elementary, and it would impact Albert at Arizona Middle School. It would reroute all this traffic and, and big rigs that you're trying to accommodate with all these warehouses. It would, it would drive all that traffic past two elementary schools. And I don't think that you probably addressed that with those districts. And I know that I'll be writing to both districts to let them know so that they can voice their opposition to this project as well into that alternative. So I just wanted to clarify to ensure that you have addressed that with those districts. I don't believe that the county has, so just wanted to get that on record also. Thank you.
Thank you. George Hague. George?
Yes, and sir, it's a couple of minutes left. I did speak earlier. I do want to once again emphasize to those who spoke in favor of this project to really think about the thousands of diesel truck trips that'll be taking place on this road. And I think this project really needs to analyze since the California Air Resources Board says that these type of uses need to be 1,000 feet away from sensitive sources such as homes. And you need to make sure that all the homes, not, not just a few, but all the homes that fall within that 1,000 feet are somehow protected from the diesel pollution, the noise pollution, the light pollution that these thousands of diesel truck trips will add to this area. Just think of trying to pull away from many of these signals behind a diesel truck. I mean, it'll take forever. And I would not be surprised if they were side by side in some cases, not just single file. So an analysis needs to be done on the impacts of the air pollution, the particulate pollution on these residents that will be living within 1,000 feet. And I expect to see that in the environmental documents that will be coming out. Hopefully, more homeowners will become aware of the real reason for this road. It's not safety for commuters. It is to make it easier for truck traffic to get to the warehouses that around March and around different places like Paris and Marina Valley, and just a growing number of warehousing. And that is the purpose of this road. There's other ways to make things safe without doing that. You have a good evening. I look forward to seeing these comments and the others I made in the final EIR with responses. Thank you again.
Thank you. So we are coming up on the final couple minutes of our meeting tonight. I want to thank everyone for being respectful of their time. We did give everybody an opportunity to come back and make more comments if you'd like. Again, everything has been recorded by the court reporter and will be transcribed. It will be part of the formal record, and it will be recorded and responded to in the final environmental document. Everything has been recorded tonight, and it's going to be posted, as I mentioned, on the website for the project, which you should see also in the chat. It is rcprojects.org/cahalco-road-widening. That's also where you can see the environmental document. March 3 is the end of the comment period. Should give you plenty of time to review that document online if you would like to do that. We would encourage you to do that. It's a very detailed document, has a lot of information in there about a lot of different topics. Again, I want to thank everyone for being very patient and just waiting out the time. Again, very thoughtful comments that were given, and those have been recorded. So again, thank you so much for your, your time with us tonight. This will conclude the end of our time together. And again, hopefully, everyone has a safe and very productive 2022. Thank you so much.
Thank you.